All right. Tommy's not here. It's up to you. So the first item on the agenda is selection of committee chairperson. Ms. Morris, I'd like to actually make a motion that we postpone this agenda item until next meeting.
I agree.
All right. We've got a motion and a second to postpone item 2.1 to the next committee. Yes, ma'am.
He signed this one. He's the same laws. He's protected by the same laws.
But it says something.
This is the only one they've ever sent. This is the only one we've ever sent. So I'll go back and see.
We're going to bill one. So it doesn't say you're hiring far teachers.
So, um, okay.
And then we're going to bill that organization.
I have thought about.
You're going to do that tonight. Yeah, go ahead and go. I'll go. This is insurance.
All right. Motion carries. Item 2.2, retiree vesting. This is an action item, however, if you would allow, Ms. Morris, I'd like to ask Ms. Bernard to come up, speak on behalf of this item.
Thank you, Mr. Hidalgo. This topic, retiree vesting, let me give you a little background on it. Some years ago, the State Office of Group Benefits passed some regulations. It said that they were going to have their employees vested in the program before they could get fully funded as retirees. They wanted to set it so that they had to serve so many years as a member of the plan in order to get 100 percent of the vesting of the employer into the plan. Or, in other words, they'd have a penalty charge on the premium if they didn't. There was a thought that there were many people who perhaps were jumping on the plan, perhaps an employee was covered under a spouse and then waited till near the end of their career to join the plan and put their spouse on so they could have the coverage until, for the remainder of their lives, and they weren't serving their time on the plan. So we did pass, the board did pass, a vesting provision which we discovered was quite unwieldy. So we had come back with a possible revision to it because the first plan we picked would have required us to set up 250 different new deduction codes in payroll, which is quite unwieldy, as you can imagine. So we tried to pare it down. And in the discussion at the last Board Insurance Committee and Employee Insurance Advisory Committee, I was asked to go do some research and see just how many people this affected. Is this really a problem? So the last handout that you see that's called Retiree Report on Vesting, you can see that I went back to the 2013 calendar year and looked at the number of people who retired in those years who actually had insurance. I didn't worry about the ones who didn't have it. So you can see there are very few. The most is in one year would be five people, and I showed you how many retirees there were. So in 2013, we had 120 retirees on the plan and only five had fewer than 10 years. And if you look to the right, I show you how many years they actually had, and so on. So I got quizzed, of course, on some of the members of the committee as to whether we really wanted to pursue, continue pursuing this vesting idea, being that it doesn't look like we'd have a whole lot of return on the effort to try to save money. Another thing that comes up that I would like to point out is if we're trying to recruit someone from another district for whatever reason, and they are near the end of the career, we could hurt them and we might not convince them to come over if they thought, in the long run, in years, that they would have to pay more for insurance than if they stayed in St. Martin or Iberia or wherever they are. So I just wanted to point that out, that my conclusion is, along with a couple of people I've spoken with on the employee committee, is that perhaps we ought to just abandon this project altogether, that we don't think it's probably worth our while to continue it. But if you do feel strongly about it, we ask that you would adopt the revised version.
Well, let me say that I failed to acknowledge there are several members from the Employees' Advisory Committee here tonight. Thank you for being here. I did hear from a couple of members who are not here that, regrettably, were ill and couldn't make it. So thank you all for being here. I'm not making an official motion because I think it probably should come from Ms. Morris, but I do want to say that I agree with the analysis, that we should leave well enough alone here. This is definitely not anything alarming that we should be fooling with. That's my opinion, and that's what I would support.
Now, we are going out a little bit of order, Mr. Chairman, but if there are members from the employee committee here, I guess I'd like to hear what the overall view is, if they are agreeing with eliminating this program.
Did you want to hear that before you make a recommendation?
Yeah, if that's okay.
Okay, sure. So if anyone from the Employee Advisory Committee would like to come up and speak on behalf of this item, feel free to do so now or forever. Hold your peace. Wow.
And I'm going to assume that there's no objection to eliminating this, so I will make a motion that the Board Insurance Committee.
Oh, oh, oh.
Who's coming? Ms. Pat?
I'm not a member.
Well, a member of the public, come on up.
I'm Pat Sonnier. I represent the retired teachers, and I'm not a member of the committee. However, this is a topic that we've been discussing for years. In fact, it was passed years ago and never put into place. However, other parishes have put vesting into place and have seen not substantial savings, but they've seen some savings. And it makes people think twice about it, you know, that to have their husband join right away rather than wait till they're ready to retire and then put their husband on the plan. You know, if we're looking at saving money, any nickel we save is good. And the way they handle it, I know in two parishes, is the insurance person figures each person that's owned this. You know, and they're not looking at, one of them said, it's maybe two legal sheets, skipping lines, you know, every other name. So they don't try to do it on computer, put all the programs on the computer. They just figure the ones that they're dealing with, and they have saved a little bit of money with that. When it was brought up to the committee, they asked for this research. They wanted it to come back to them to discuss it before it came to the board. The committee has not met again to review this research, and I think they might like to do this because they're trying to make the committee more responsible by not voting on things just when it comes up, researching it, studying it, voting on it before it comes to you. So I would like if this would be just postponed, let it come back to them, and let their opinion come back to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask if anyone from the committee, given Ms. Sonnier's comments, if anyone from the committee would like to come up and speak on this. I did receive comments from one of your fellow committee members that says that leaving it alone so there's some flexibility, sounds like a good idea. There's not much, as Ms. Bernard alluded to, there's really not much of a problem here. Have we monetized it at all? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Mary Lewis. I have recently joined the committee, and I only have had attended one meeting. However, like Ms. Pat said, we had not discussed anything, and it was supposed to come back to us so we could have a discussion. So with that being said, we would definitely like to wait until it comes to our committee.
I don't think there is. Ms. Bernard, the discussion regarding revisiting this information, was there supposed to be a subsequent meeting, or did the committee members have the information?
No, they did not have it. They have not met since I put this together.
Okay.
And we certainly can.
Yeah, sure. And the recap is that your office was asked to look at the vesting schedule. I think you said it was adopted in 2015, maybe? And decide whether or not it was too aggressive or not aggressive enough, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And what was the main concern of the committee? Because you could speak on their behalf, you were there.
Well, it was after the meeting that I was asked questions by various members to gather that information. So, yeah.
It wasn't in the meeting?
At a committee meeting, we just talked about deferring it.
I'm Katie Landry, and I am a member of the Insurance Committee. I was trying to stay quiet, but that doesn't seem possible. I did attend the Insurance Committee Advisory Meeting, and we did ask for more information, like how many employees would it impact? And I have to say, when this was first brought up years ago, I was in favor of it because at that time, people were jumping on our insurance the year before they were retiring or their husbands were retiring, and it had a huge impact on the budget. When looking at some of the numbers, I was really astounded that it doesn't impact as many people or the budget as much as I thought it would. We did ask for more information and how it would affect the budget at that meeting, and then we were hoping to have another meeting so that we could see whether or not we could support or not support the motion. So I do see both sides. I'm not sure of the major impact at this time on the insurance. So that's kind of what happened. We assumed that we would visit this again, but hopefully we'll have, I think we have quarterly meetings now, so hopefully at the next meeting, if you agree, then we could look at it and come back with a recommendation. Thank you.
All right. Well, given what's been, the information provided, then, Ms. Bernard, is there any reason to not defer it? Okay. All right. Then I won't make the motion. We'll just let it die at this committee meeting, and it'll be deferred to the future. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I have a hard habit of getting out of my last year, so.
It's all good. It's perfect. Item 2.3, financial report for plan year 2017. I'd like to invite Mr. Lynn Fontaine with Hub International up to give us what is hopefully going to be a positive report.
If we can start on page one, I'll give you the summary overview, and then we'll get into the details. But what we have here are your year-end figures for our 2017 group health plan. We'll start with the 2017 column on the left hand. You can see from a participation standpoint, not a big change, 5578 to the 5505, representing about a 1.3 percent increase in participation in the plan. If you look at your claims, total claims paid, we've gone from $46,000, $46,129,798 down to $44,073,000. We've had a good drop in total claims. Our medical down, prescription drugs on a gross cost basis are up, but if you remember, we factored in the rebates that we garnered with a negotiated contract we entered into with RX Benefits, and that has brought our prescription drug costs down to flat. And I have further notes that I'll explain on that. Plan reimbursements are up, and that is in the area of those prescription drug rebates. Retiree subsidies stayed about the same, just a little bit less on that. So a net paid claims figure of the $41,244 from $43 million the previous year. Fixed costs increased. That was purely from administrative costs with Blue Cross was the only increase there. Actually, we had a reinsurance decrease for 2018. Retiree premiums with Humana for a total planned cost of $45,495. That's a 5 percent decrease when we look at it on a per-employee-per-month basis. From a funding standpoint, our funding increased with the increased participation from the $48,595 to $49,333. Net employer costs, so this is planned costs, net of the employee and retiree contributions, has gone down from $32,346 to $30,253. Our budget loss ratio has reduced from 97.4 to 92.2, and our surplus has increased from $1,270 to $3,837. So planned cost has decreased. Therefore, our surplus has increased here. If you'll notice the bullet on the bottom, planned costs decreased 5 percent on a per-employee-per-month basis, the 680 versus the 716. When we look at total planned costs, net of employee contributions, a 7.6 percent decrease. We've got the lowest funding to cost budget ratio that we've had in recent years and the highest surplus. On page two, we break it down on a per-employee-per-month basis, so this gives you more of an apples-to-apples comparison. Although we did not have a big change in participation, only 1.3 percent, this does equate it on a per-employee-per-month basis. So you see that your medical claims were down some 13.4 percent. This is a result of a 34 percent decrease in inpatient hospitalization utilization. We had fewer large claimants this year, resulting in a significant decrease in our inpatient hospital utilization. Total claims down 5.8 percent. If you look at total planned costs, 716 to 680, down 5 percent. Our net employer costs down 7.6, that's net of employee contributions. And then, of course, that surplus number going from 20 to 57, that's actually 185 percent increase there. On page three, not much to talk about with enrollment. I will tell you that our participation hasn't changed much at all. One of the things that we've been looking at, especially with the oil and gas economy, you had a slight increase in spousal participation, not very much, but spousal claims have not become a big problem to the group. In many school systems, you see spousal claims as much as 30 to 40 percent higher than our own employees not having that problem here. From a membership standpoint, membership is the number of actual belly buttons or folks covered under your plan, whereas participation is the number of employees. Actually, membership is just slightly outpacing our participation, but not in any kind of harmful manner there. Like I mentioned earlier, in some cases, you see the membership outpacing the increase in employees in a great way, and that does affect the cost of the plan. But the difference in that 1 percent to the 2 percent is not having any negative impact on the plan. On page five, as mentioned earlier, if you look in the chart at the bottom, you see currently we are expending $476.80 per spouse as compared to $450.73 for the employee. When we look at this on a three-year average, we're actually expending about 6.5 percent lower on the employee than the spouse. So many cases, much higher, so spouses aren't exactly driving the cost of the plan. On page six, once again, there's the 13.4 percent decrease, and you'll see across the bar graph here, this is the lowest spend we've had on medical in quite some time. A portion of that due to the decreased number of large claimants, resulting in that 34 percent, almost a little over a third decrease in our hospital utilization inpatient. If you notice that bottom bullet, 2 percent, less than 2 percent of your medical plan membership has claims over 25,000, and that represents 45 percent of the total medical claims of the group. With regard to prescription drugs, on page seven, on the next page here, you see from a gross cost standpoint, a 7.6 percent increase. Cases are the industry trend in prescription drugs is as much as 12 to 15 percent, so we're far below trend. But when you factor in the additional rebates that we negotiated through our new pharmacy contract, that actually takes the cost down to 255 on a per-employee-per-month basis. So we've actually decreased our costs there. If you remember, when we went out and recommended our change in pharmacy to the new vendor, pharmacy vendor, one of the biggest savings areas was the rebates, which increased from $9 on a per-employee-per-month basis to 27. So that's where the majority of that savings is there. Reason that all cases are increasing in prescription drug costs, you'll see in further reporting, especially from a school system standpoint, your employees and retirees participating in your plan are more compliant than any other school system that I represent in that they are using generic medications and lower-cost alternatives, which drives the cost of prescription drugs higher today, is specifically these specialty medications, medications for rheumatoid arthritis, Crohn's disease. You even see advertisement on TV now for plaque psoriasis. These are all specialty medications that cost several thousand dollars a month. You don't get to those medications until you've tried lower-cost alternatives, but many of these medications didn't exist a few years ago. Pharmacy was not the issue a few years ago that it is today because pharmacy represented maybe 15 percent of your total planned costs, to where now it's more like 30, and in the next couple of years, it's expected to approach 50. In many cases, there are savings from pharmacy, such as it makes good cost-effective sense to have somebody on a regimen of cholesterol medication, high blood pressure, diabetes, that thing, versus keeping them in the hospital and on an inpatient basis, especially when you see the planned savings that we've garnered from the lower inpatient numbers. But it's these high-cost medications that really drive the plan. Also, we've brought in with all of the pharmacy recommendations that we made for the upcoming plan year, many of those were designed to decrease the cost of some of these high-cost medications. So overall, once again, very good news on both the medical and the prescription drug front. Which brings your total claims on the next page to a 5.8 percent decrease, and then paid claims net of planned reimbursements down 6.4 percent. Total planned costs on your next page, down 5 percent. Your average increased cost since 2012, 1.9 percent. This year has really helped to bring that average down. Next page shows you that 34 percent. If you look at the chart on the bottom and you see that P E P M number, and you'll notice that hospital inpatient was $156. That was our spend for 2016 on a per-employee-per-month basis, which is reduced down to 103 for 2017, resulting in the lower number of high-cost claimants. Hospital outpatient also went down, but only 2.3 percent. And of course, the professional component, which are your doctors and diagnostic centers and things like that, breaking even at the 153 versus the 152. Also, what we bring into discussion right here, you guys have invested a lot of time and effort in wellness, okay? Over a period of years, that is going to have a positive effect on your plan. So it's hard to quantify, but you always want to make mention of that at times like this, when you see these large claimants in inpatient hospital going down. Also, the inpatient hospital spend was better this year because more of the hospitalization took place at facilities where we had our highest discounts. For example, MD Anderson doesn't have the highest discounts because people are going to go there for their treatment, and cost isn't usually the big factor. They're going there for their reputation and their expertise, so from a supply and demand, they don't have the biggest discounts out there. So when these cancer treatments decrease and you see more going to Lafayette General, where we have big local Blue Cross discounts, that also factors in for our lower medical costs. From a diagnosis standpoint, if you'll see that circulatory injury and poisoning, musculoskeletal, on down the line, you had four different disease categories that had a per-employee-per-month spend of over $20. None in the current year or in 2017, and the highest one is 19. So you've had a 9.5 percent drop in musculoskeletal, 33 percent drop in circulatory, neoplasma almost equal there, but a big, big decrease in those areas. Now, wellness usually affects circulatory and musculoskeletal more than any other because diet, exercise, that type of thing. So nothing over 19 per-employee-per-month, and good news on those diagnostic categories. You'll see that on an outpatient basis, no real increases there, just slight decreases on a per-employee-per-month basis, circulatory, neoplasms. And factors influencing health does include maintenance chemo, so that number's always going to be high at the top here. From a top facility standpoint, this is what I was alluding to earlier, you don't see the MD Anderson this year. You do not see, there was a large claim at Tulane last year. That's not factored in to our utilization this year, so we had our highest utilization where we've got our highest discounts, and that also decreased our medical spend. As I told you earlier, 87 percent generic utilization under your prescription drug plan for a school system and even for any group that we report, 87 percent generic utilization is just outstanding. When you've kind of flipped the coin on that, we're showing that 87 percent of the time your people are choosing generic medications, that 87 percent utilization only represents 21 percent of your total prescription drug spend. So if we kind of... So if we kind of reverse the order, thirteen percent of your prescriptions are brand, but that represents seventy-nine percent of your total prescription drug spend. Yes, sir?
So I just want to, I'm not on this committee, but I appreciate if you guys just, so forty-one percent of our budget is prescription medication of what we're spending?
This particular?
Forty-one point three percent. So obviously, that would be where we would try to focus as much effort in cost savings. So then eighty-seven percent, I want to make sure I understand this, percent of the prescriptions are prescriptions for generics, yet that only yields twenty-one percent of that eighteen point two million dollars? So on the brand name prescriptions, are these, because that's all that exists, there is no generic for those, or are you able to, are you able to look at, see, do we have people that are taking brand name prescriptions that could take generic?
Very few. Less than one percent.
Okay, so it really is just, hey, that's the price of the drug that can help the patient?
I'm going to answer your question with the report here. If you can turn to page twenty, these are only, this is only your top ten medications. It's only two percent of your total prescriptions, but over twenty-two percent of your total prescription drug costs. These are mostly specialty medications that I was talking about, the Humira Pen, for example. You see Phil Nicholson on TV advertising that. That medication has a cost of anywhere from seven to ten thousand dollars a month based upon the prescription, the utilization, that type of thing. You don't take those medications till you've tried the lower-cost alternatives, more so because of the side effects involved and things like that. So to answer your question, the brand name utilization when generics are available is less than one percent. It's just the fact that they are not, these medications are coming onto the market, they do have a positive effect, and they're being prescribed more and more every day, and that's what's really driving the cost of pharmacy, not alone in your plan and everybody's plan. So the more we can do to make certain that we have tight authorizations in the plan, that people don't get these medications prescribed unless it's medically necessary, and that we eliminate any waste, and that we get those medications at the lowest possible cost. That's what we're always going to be working on for the next several years, because that's the highest rising cost in healthcare today.
Are you able to get that detailed, so seventy-nine percent, right? So that's seventy-nine percent are brand, I'm back on page fifteen, are you able to target those drugs that make up the seventy-nine percent specifically and negotiate with the...
That's exactly what your pharmacy benefit manager does.
Okay. Are they doing a good job?
Absolutely.
Can they do a better job?
They are always striving to do a better job, that's why they're always renegotiating and re-contracting. So the dilemma that you're dealing with is the pharmacy manufacturers are raising their prices for these medications every year. Why? Because they can't, okay? Demand's there for them. At the same time, every year, our contract keeps getting better, we keep getting deeper discounts, we keep getting increased rebates, we keep using tighter rules on dispensing limits and authorizations, that's the methodology there. But this is going to be an ongoing battle, because when you have a commodity that's going up in price by fifteen percent a year, for us to make your pharmacy numbers flat, we've got to constantly bring in further negotiation and cost-saving strategies into the pharmacy mix of it.
Thank you.
So I'll take you on to, back to page sixteen here. The increase in pharmacy, you can see here from a per employee per month basis or per member, is not because of more scripts per member or per employee, that's not the factor. The factor is the high-cost drugs. When we look at page seventeen, this tells us that the top drugs utilized by number of scripts, these are all going to be your generic low-cost medications. I can tell you, the one that usually comes up in conversation is hydrocodone, because it used to be way up at the top. If you look at two thousand and twelve, it was your, it was your number one, two thousand and thirteen, number two, number three, and fourteen, and stayed there in fifteen. They've reclassified hydrocodone a few years ago, you can no longer get a ninety-day supply. And you guys do know all of the news that you hear about opiates, and one out of every five people that are prescribed opiates are having addiction problems, things like this. So it's been reclassified, so the good news on here, as you can see, is that the hydrocodone utilization is coming down, and has continued to come down this year. Next, on page eighteen, we've discussed this, the Humira, Emerald, all of these different types of medications. The Humira and the Emerald, those are those medications used to treat rheumatoid arthritis, Crohn's, plaque psoriasis, those disease states, and becoming more and more popular with the prescriptions. PPO savings, and when we talk about reason for being with the current entity that we are with to administer our plan and provide network, and of course, that's Blue Cross of Louisiana, the discounts are running at sixty-nine point one percent, and I can tell you, that is extremely high, especially in a school system plan. Lafayette General utilization and the lack of an M.D. Anderson helped to bring that up a little bit, but still outstanding PPO discounts. And then if you turn to the next page and couple that with the fact of ninety-eight and a half percent of all claims are paid in network, this shows you, not only do you have deep discounts in your plan, but you've got excellent choice of doctors and hospitals, because you have only one point five percent of your folks going outside of the network. From a cost breakdown, fixed costs versus your claims, you can see that you're running your plan very, very efficiently. One point two percent going to reinsurance, administration, five and a half percent, and ninety-four cents out of every dollar going to actual claims cost. This is a lot less than what the federal government pays for Medicare or Medicaid. This is a lot less than what a insurance carrier would charge you if you were fully insured. So you have done quite well being self-funded.
Could you explain those to me, please?
Yes, sir.
Administration, who is administration and who is reinsurance?
All righty. Blue Cross is your administrator. In administration, that is, you are paying Blue Cross a fee to process your claims, you're paying Blue Cross a fee for case management, you pay Blue Cross for their network, utilization of their network. Reinsurance is separate coverage that you purchase to protect you in the event of a large claimant. Let's say we had a preemie baby or a significant accident, and that deductible is set at a half a million dollars.
So once a claim hits, one single claim hits a half million, it goes to reinsurance?
It's a half a million, you're no longer at risk. You've purchased insurance to reimburse the plan.
Is that an annual, or is it a lifetime for a specific issue?
That is per plan year. So we purchased that half a million dollars deductible, and the deductible resets on January first.
But it's per person, per claim?
Per person, per year. Not per claim, per year.
Per person, per year, right.
So you could actually have somebody who suffered a serious accident, and months later got diagnosed with a serious illness, and let's say that the accident was over a half a million, any further claims, regardless of the diagnosis, would be reimbursed.
And have you looked at changing that deductible amount versus the frequency of claims?
Yes, we've had, actually, in the recent insurance committee meeting, we had discussion along those lines, and looked at the deductible, and we had discussion of whether that deductible should be lower. In doing so, we would pay significantly more premium, and we haven't had the claims activity to look towards lowering that deductible.
Great, thank you.
And claims distribution by dollar amount on the next page, basically, time after time, I told you, especially when we're discussing benefits, ninety percent of your plan members have claims less than five thousand dollars. Eighty-seven and a half, eighty-seven point five percent of the monies are only spent by twenty percent of your membership, which is pretty much right in line. So when you think about some of the things that we do benefit-wise, we want to make sure that when we are looking at any kind of benefits, that we want to get the most savings, but for the least impact on your members. And then the final page just basically summarizes everything for when you want to go back and kind of look at what the state of things were at this particular time. But basically, summation is, you've got your lowest budget to funding, to claims cost ratio, costs are down this year, we've done quite well, and we'll continue to look towards saving strategies to keep that number like it is.
Mr. Fontaine, thank you very much. I have a couple of questions that probably require a brief explanation, and then we'll open it up to any comments or questions. Before I do that, though, I want to thank you, because I believe that the results here are a testament to you and your firm's hard work, and I believe that this is what happens when we hire professionals, give them a direction, and allow them to bring back unbiased recommendations, as I believe you've done since you started with Lafayette Parent School System, so thank you. I'm excited to see the savings and the surplus. On page five, you did say that the, while the spousal claims are lower than maybe the trend, I do notice that it is the first time, at least on this report, that it is higher than the employee claims, or the average paid per member per month. Could you tell me why that is?
You had a significantly high-cost claim on a few spouses, so it, what you look at there is, you want to make sure that you're not having any type of trend, in that one of the things we really watched, and this goes back to first meeting from when you hired me, several of the school systems have really suffered from the industry downturns, and when they're, the private sector renewal comes up, or they got laid off, either one of those events makes those folks come to the school system, and then you wind up being the plan that ensures everybody, okay? So with that, that really has a significant impact. You haven't had that influx of spouses, your spousal participation really has kind of just tracked that one, two percent growth of, on the employee side, but what'll happen from time to time, especially in a year where your inpatient hospitalizations drop thirty-four percent, and you don't have as many high-cost claimants, it's just that this year, it happened to be a spouse more than employees in the past, so it's not any type of trend to be concerned with, and if in fact, we did see that, there are a number of saving strategies that we could employ on that.
Okay. As you alluded to in here, from prescription drugs to just the facilities or the providers use, it appears that education is a major reason why we're seeing these savings. Again, I think your firm has produced a lot of that in connection with risk management. But wellness seems to be, I know Mr. Kinesik alluded to prescription drug being a major factor. Of course it is, you're constantly working on that, but wellness, also, as you alluded to, seems to be, if not the biggest, at least the second-biggest factor. What are we going to do moving forward to make sure that we are continuing to educate all of the members, and what are we going to do with our wellness plans to make sure that everybody's participating in the annual wellness checks and things of that nature to help, you know, make sure that they're doing their part?
Wellness is something that you constantly have to look at, and in certain times, restructure, because you don't want it to mature on you. You always want folks to be engaged in wellness, but as a wellness plan matures, you want to either reward or use a carrot or a stick for those that are actually making that lifestyle change. So it goes from having people engage into getting themselves checked and go and get a checkup regularly, to those that are diagnosed with something, either being compliant in their treatment, or taking advantage of the treatment to no longer have that diagnosis. So that's all part and parcel of what we meet on and make sure that we're employing the proper strategies. One other thing that I'll tell you that goes with the topic you had before, the mindset of wanting to invite people into the plan earlier, to make them participate in your plan, and to pay premium for a number of years, that mindset has started to change with several large employers that have retirees, in that a retiree is going to be in an age group that's going to be more likely to make a claim, okay? So some plans are actually going in the direction of loosening rather than tightening, because they'd rather have that person covered someplace else until the last possible moment. If they want to come on when they're retired, that's fine, but at least you didn't have them the five years before making claims. That's just a school of thought that's starting to come into play when I'm talking about some of this best thing. Because if you look at age categories and all, it's really kind of between fifty-five and sixty-five where your highest claimants are.
Thank you. And I'll end my comments with whatever we can do to enhance their education, which, you know, I've done a great job at providing, whatever we can do to enhance the education to the member, to the spouse, to the family, you know, certainly looking forward to seeing that in two thousand and eighteen. Comments, questions, concerns from any members of the public, please come up, thank you.
Is it on yet?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Leah Gelleri. I am a wellness ambassador for my school, and I just want to let people know that to do the wellness, the, all the stuff, the components you have to go through to get your points, and you get a two hundred and fifty-dollar deduction, that made a big difference.
Thank you. Thank you, I agree. Anyone else? All right, well, good night, this meeting's adjourned.